11th of 2019, and it is now 6:00 PM. My name is John Link, supervisor with the D E M Division of Marine Fisheries. I'm here tonight to officiate this hearing. We've already proposed amendments to Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Regulations on behalf of D E M Director Janet Elkroyd. With me today from the Division of Marine Fisheries are Pete Duhamel, Nicole Costa, Anna Gerber Williams, Scott Olshewski, Chris Parkins, Julia Livermore, Connor McManus, Christina Hope Smith, and Bob Ballou, and a member of enforcement, I don't know your name, sir.
Dan White.
Dan White, thank you. Tonight's hearing concerns proposed amendments to four R A Marine Regulations, Fishery Regulations, Part Three Finfish, Part Four Shellfish, Part Five Lobster, Crabs and Other Crustaceans, and Part Six General Equipment Provisions. Concerning several individual regulatory proposals and which were publicly noticed on February 27th pursuant to procedural requirements of Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42-35 Administrative Procedures and the Office of the Rhode Island Secretary of State, under the authority of the Rhode Island General law, Chapters 42-17.1. Pursuant to the Administrative Procedures Act, annotated regulations showing proposed changes have been filed with the Secretary of State's office at the time of the notice, and which are provided on both Secretary of State's and Division's webpage. Interested persons are strongly encouraged to review those documents to fully understand the proposals brought forward here tonight. The purpose of this hearing is to afford interested party an opportunity to submit data, opinions, and/or arguments concerning the proposed rulemaking, or how such proposed actions can be changed to minimize the impact on those affected while still achieving the required goals. This hearing is not a forum for discussing, debating, arguing, or otherwise having any dialogue. Please limit any questions to clarifying questions only. For tonight's hearing, the Division will provide a PowerPoint presentation summarizing each of the proposals. Again, you are encouraged to review the annotated regulations and the public notice. For each hearing item, the following process will be observed. First, the Chair will recognize speakers. Second, no more than five minutes will be allowed for a presentation or comments. And third, when you are recognized, please clearly identify yourself by name and affiliation, if any. Provide your comments. If desired, provide a written comment of your statement. If comments are extensive, it is strongly encouraged that comments be provided in writing in order to assure that the record is clear. The public comment period will conclude at 4:00 PM. I'm sorry, will conclude on March 30th at 4:00 PM. The record of this public hearing and comments will be provided to the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council for consideration at their meeting on April 1st and on May 6th, at which time the Council will provide a recommendation to the Director on each item. The Director has the option to file the rules and regulations with the Secretary of State as-is, file the rules and regulations with minor changes, or make additional amendments to the rules and regulations and hold a new public hearing. If filed, these rules and regulations become effective 20 days after filing and have the effect of law. Prior to the hearing comments, the following exhibits are noted for the record. Exhibit one is a copy of the public notice and annotated regulations that were filed with the Secretary of State on October 19th. Exhibits two through four are comments received to date. Exhibit two is a written comment from the Arch Date Company regarding men-hated management. Exhibit three is a written comment from Nancy Scarduzio of the Secretary of State office regarding a minor technical revision to regulatory language for commercial black sea bass. Exhibit four is a written comment from Rich Hiddinger regarding the proposed special shore provision for recreational summer flounder management. And just again, to kind of codify the statement before, we have a lot of slides to get through tonight. It's a big hearing, so we really want you to limit your questions to clarifying only. We will not be going into detail about any of the proposed changes. The comment period is good until March 30th. Feel free to give anyone on staff at Marine Fisheries a call if you want to dig deeper, or feel free to go into the regulation themselves. We'd really like to get through this in a timely fashion. So let's move on to the PowerPoint. Oh yeah, and one other thing, we have a slight agenda change. We are moving Item 8, 2019 Recreational Summer Flounder Management, Part Three, Section 3.10.1, up to the first item for consideration. So first off, important dates, as mentioned before, the March 30th is the end of the public comment period. You have up until then to submit a public comment. April 1st is our first of two Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council meetings. We've split them into two because it would be a very long agenda otherwise. That item will cover all regulatory items related to finfish. The next council meeting will be on May 6th, and that will be the remaining regulations to be considered and other items to be determined. So, the first item up for comments is for our Summer Flounder 2019 Recreational Management. We have two proposals. One is the general season, which is status quo, 19-inch minimum size, season from May 1st to December 31st, six fish possession limit. We also have a second proposal that would provide an option for a special shore provision for summer flounder. That would allow a 16-inch fluke to be caught at between, it says on the slide, May 1st to May 31st. We've actually run the numbers through our models and have determined that if we want to stay within our target range for the recreational catch per fluke for this year, we would have to start the special shore provision on May 3rd, not May 1st. So two days, not a big difference there, but I want to let people know that we did run those numbers. That special shore provision would allow for two fish and 16 inches. We would still need to have this be vetted by the ASMFC Technical Committee, and it may delay our ability to put this out there in 2019 immediately. Also, it should be noted that this special shore provision would be allowed at the same places we allow the shorter scup provision to take place, and the locations are listed right there. So right now, I take any comment on 2019 recreational summer flounder. Steve?
Steve Medeiris, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association. We, as the association, we sponsor, yeah, we support options one and two as proposed.
Thank you. Rich?
Rich Hiddinger, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers. The reason for the proposal for the 16-inch shore fish is simply that I have heard from a lot of shore fishermen that with the size, the minimum size, going up on fluke at 19 inches, it's virtually impossible for them to catch keeper size. They can catch a lot of smaller fish. They can catch a few over 16-inch, and basically, very, very difficult to get a 19-inch fish. The very small numbers of fish that would be caught from shore between 16 and 19 inches, I think the Division has gone through an analysis of that. It's a minimal number of fish, but it would really bring a lot of shore fishermen back into the fishery, allow them two fish per person to take home for dinner. So obviously, I support proposal one and two. Thank you.
Kate?
Kate Monte, I'm a council member, so this is not a comment, it's just a point of clarification. So the shore angler, if both of these were to pass, the shore angler would be able to take theoretically two 16-inch fish as well as six 19-inch fish?
We'll have to look into that. If you, I mean, we'll look into that.
I do think the analysis was done on additional fish, that these 16-inch fish would be in addition to what is normally caught. I think that's the way the model is far from a model.
That's my understanding. I'd like to clarify with Jay. Anyone else for recreational fluke? Okay, moving on to Summer Flounder 2019 Commercial Management. First, I'd like to share some good news that we have on this particular item, and that is, we just received today a notification that in fact, we are going to receive an increase in our quota allotment for summer flounder for 2019. In fact, we are receiving a large increase, it's 73% increase, equal to 1.7 million pounds. We have done some analysis at the Division, and it has been determined that if, with this new amount of quota, the commercial summer period would not necessarily have to have any days out. It could go for the full seven days during the week. Please keep that in mind when considering not only these options, but also the coming black sea bass options. One other thing important to say is, the Division had no knowledge that this was going to go through prior to this hearing, so we don't have an option for all three days, all seven days of the week being open. If that is your desired outcome of the hearing, of the regulations, feel free, please feel free to comment that you would like to have all seven days open. That being said, let me go through the options. Option one is status quo. Option two is to reopen on Sunday during the summer period. Option three is to reopen Friday and Sunday during the summer period. Option four is to reopen on Saturday and Sunday during the summer period, and again, we do not have an option for seven days open during the week. Any comments on commercial summer flounder?
Would the limit stay the same if it was open for the seven days? Would it still be?
Right now, per reg, it is slated to open at 50. My understanding is that question would be put to the Council, what to open at. Yes?
We would support Tandoc, we would support seven days, seven days a week being open.
Yes?
Seven days.
Seven days. And please state your name and any affiliation if you have it, please.
Josiah Dodge, commercial fisherman.
Thank you. Yes, Donald?
Donald Fox. I'm speaking for myself, I would like to see it seven days.
Rich Hiddinger, I just wanted to make a little clarification. I was on the Council when we went and eliminated Friday and Saturday initially, and the reason for that was to try and extend the quota so that the season wouldn't close partway through. But I noticed that all the slides here for the summer period have 50-pound starting possession limit. When we first went to five days a week, it was 100 pounds. Does that have to be stated on here? Because I see the 50, and I think that an option before the Council should be, rather than opening all seven days, open, I don't know, six or five, and go to 100 pounds?
Duly noted, but the way we, just so you know, though, the way we can work with our possession limits is, we could open it at 50 pounds, and the next day turn around and open it up at 100 pounds. Right now, opening at 50 pounds is what's on the regulations. Yes?
Lots of Z, Adam Watts. We support seven days.
Yes?
Brandon Lake, I support seven days.
Oh, right there.
Ron Kenyon, I have a clarifying question. If the quota increases 73%, do you by chance know what it was and now what it is? Just numbers.
I have in my notes that we're getting 1.7 additional million pounds. I didn't do the math and add that up.
From about a million.
Sorry?
It's been about a million, now it's going up to 1.7, so it's going up to 1.7.
Thank you.
James Perkins, commercial fisherman, I support seven days.
Jonathan Kean, Wakefield, support seven days.
Yeah, Joe McCarty, commercial fisherman, I support seven days.
Ray Joe, commercial fisherman, I support seven days.
Al Eagles, support seven days.
Captain Sullivan, I support the seven days.
Any other comments on commercial summer flounder? Let's move on to black sea bass 2019 recreational management. Right now, there were no new amendments proposed for 2019. This is for status quo. 15-inch fish, season outlined, broken into three blocks, three fish, seven fish, depending on the season. Any comments on recreational black sea bass? Yes?
I guess you don't have any amendments proposed, but for people that just have a baybowl, that's off the link start, because the sea bass basically leave the middle of the bay by the end of June, so that's only giving you one week if you get a baybowl.
Could I have your name, sir?
Excuse me?
Could you state your name, sir?
Evan Ford.
Steve Medeiris, so begrudgingly support this even though we tried and barely understand it next year.
Rich Hiddinger, I would support in the future an earlier start date for black sea bass, and there are several reasons for that. Like Ed said, the larger black sea bass are inshore early, so you can catch them in early June. That's one reason. The other is because our neighboring states both open in early May. Massachusetts opens, I believe it's the second week of May, and Connecticut the same. With us not being able to take any black sea bass until June 24th, it means that when we're fluke fishing in May and early June, you're catching a lot of large black sea bass that you can't keep, they got to be released. So if it can't be done for this year, I'd recommend that we try and put into motion an earlier start date for next year.
Thank you.
Rick Fellon, that's from the Rhode Island Party and Charterboard Association. I just wanted to put on the record that that fall season is important to our industry, and as we look to change regulations for sea bass, just keep that in mind, that's an important part for us as well, if we catch big fish at that point. So it's a kind of give and take.
Douglas Pearson, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers, I'd like to find out that that 623 opening is very, very disturbing for recreational fishermen to debate.
Any other comments on recreational black sea bass? Okay, moving on to 2019 commercial black sea bass management. We have three options here. First one is for status quo. Second is an industry proposal, which would combine the spring and summer periods as well as the fall and winter one periods. And then the third option is also an industry proposal, and this is the one I said to think about with what may happen with fluke next year. This proposal was to, an industry proposal, to align the closed days for black sea bass with the closed days for summer flounder. Take any comments on commercial black sea bass? Yes, Kate?
Katie Young, we support status quo, black sea bass.
Donald Fox, again, speaking for myself. I would support status quo too. I'm not crazy about this option here, and option two, it seems to me like, if you open it up May 1st, you change those periods and have it run till July 31st, that 44% could be long gone. At least you have a fishery every month for some time, the way it's done presently. You could be shut off before the end of June until September with that option two.
Thank you.
Adam Watts, we support option two with the change of the fluke regulations impending, because there won't be any closed days, so we support option two.
Yes, James Perkins, I support option two.
Ken Mergo, commercial fisherman, I support option two, combining the July, as currently constructed, the May. The quota in May usually runs through mid-June, we shut down for two weeks and open up again July 1st. Soon after that, Massachusetts opens with their bigger limits and negatively affects the market. So I support moving the July substitute period quota into May, because we should run about till the end of June, and be closing down right when Massachusetts starts, so we'll get more money for our allocation of fish. And also, that two-week shutdown, I see it as inefficient. People have pots in the water, they sit there, they're on high-risk gear loss when your gear sits for two weeks. So I think it would be more efficient for the fishery for option two.
Anyone else?
Captain Sullivan, I support option two.
Al Eagles, support option two.
Anyone else for commercial black sea bass? Yes?
Josiah Dodge, status quo. That early opening is great for the guys in the bay, the guys down the south, like Wesley area, we'd lose our fishery just because of the way it works, to show up earlier here.
Ray Joe, I support status quo.
Yeah, Joe McCarty, I support option one, status quo.
Dr. Javante, I support option one, status quo.
Very much so.
Status quo.
Matt Curran, I support option two.
Yes?
John McDonald, option two.
Who's in?
Steve Kackowski, option one.
Richard Chappell, option one, x quo.
Sounds like ours, most fishermen, option two.
You guys, Celeste, option two.
Ian Egan, option two.
Any other comments for commercial sea bass? Okay, so let's move on to 2019 recreational scup management. We have four options here. First one is for status quo. The second one is to have an earlier opening date, opening up on January 1st, basically all year. Option three would be to increase the possession limit for party and charter during September and October, up to 50 fish, from 45. Option four would be to amend the season of possession for party charter, such that we have a bonus season, a 50-fish season for May and June, 30 fish for July and August, and then back up to 50 for September and October. And then the last option, five, is to have increased the possession limit for a party charter up to a 50-fish bonus season for the September, October, November, and December months. Any comments on recreational scup?
I support option two.
Any other comments for recreational scup?
Clarification question, sir? Is the only year-round opening option two?
Any other comments on recreational scup?
I don't support any of them. The intent was to make the fishery a year-round fishery. The federal permit holders are 50-fish year-round at nine inches. With my understanding, we were going to try and keep it open year-round at 30 fish, and then increase the bonus season. Right now, all we've got here is a five-fish increase for the bonus season. We're under quota by about 30%. We're not even coming close to catching the fish, so I don't think this is what was presented at the workshop. I couldn't be real, I wasn't under the impression we were trying to get a year-round fishery.
Anyone else for recreational scup? Okay, so this is, the next one is for commercial scup, gear-based possession limit thresholds, and this would adjust the commercial scup gear-based possession limit thresholds to be consistent with the final rule published by NOAA Fisheries, effective date, January 1st, 2019. The basics of this are that we would go up to, from 500 to a 1,000-pound possession limit between October 1st and April the 14th, and then greater than 2,000 pounds or more scup from April 15th through June 15th. The other changes would be that between June 16th and September 30th, it would be 200 pounds, and then there's also the same restrictions that we've always had. Any comments on this commercial scup proposal? There you go. Donald?
I think this is a great idea, but to me, you need to go with that 2,000-pound limit there, for, you need to go longer than June 15th. That would be caught past that date on the beach in Charleston, I would suspect. You can do it by going a little bit deeper, and the right type of wind would blow them inshore, and you might get it. I would like to see that go to, say, August 50th. Again, we're not catching that quota either, it's, I'd like to see it go a lot longer than
What is the rationale of stopping June 15th rather than going all the way to August?
I'd have to clarify with Jason first. Anyone else for commercial scup gear-based possession? All right, the next item is for 2019 recreational striped bass. There are no amendments proposed, this is status quo, 28-inch, one-fish possession limit. Any comments on recreational striped bass? Okay, let's move on to 2019 commercial general category striped bass. We have three options. Option one is status quo, starting on May 20th to August 4th, 70% of the quota. Second period would be starting on August 5th to the end of the year, 30% of the quota. Option two is an industry proposal, which would eliminate the fall period and start on May 20th to December 31st. Option three is also an industry proposal, which would begin on June 2nd, run until December 31st, also eliminating the fall period. All periods would have five fish per person vessel day. Any comments on commercial striped bass management?
John Mike Kean, option three.
Thank you.
Joe McCarty, I support option three.
Joe?
Yeah, Joe McCarty, I support option three also.
Marsha, I support option three also.
Right there, somebody?
Option three.
Option two, come in.
Brandon Lake, option one.
Let's move with it.
Zachary Saez, commercial fisherman, option two.
Ken Mergo, option two.
Steve Kattowski, option one.
Yes.
Hell Lots, option two.
Ray Clemmets, option three.
Right there?
Just like Dodge, option one.
Any other comment?
Richard Chappell, option three.
Any other comments on commercial striped bass? Moving on. Next item for consideration is 2019 striped bass, commercial floating fish trap management. We have no amendments proposed for 2019. That is status quo, twenty-six inch fish, starting on April first, going to the end of the year, unlimited possession. Any comment on floating fish trap commercial striped bass? All right, seeing none. Moving on to TATAG, 2019 party charter possession limit. This is a, this is a change from, that we should have done last year. Recreational possession limit was amended from six to five fish, as well as extending the season to December thirty-first as a result of a public hearing, February 2018. These changes were also to apply to the party charter regulations, but were inadvertently missed at that time. And this is us making the correction. Any comments on party charter possession limits for TATAG?
Rick Bellevents, at the workshop, I had requested some analysis to look at the, the actual impact of six fish versus five and comparing that to Massachusetts remaining open during the spawning closure at one fish and were closed at zero. See if they're comparable, because it's my thought that they would be, and I wasn't sure my analysis got completed or not. But I would be in favor of leaving the bag limit at six. For, for, and that made, October fifteenth through December fifteenth. So, that's not right either, that's why I didn't.
The, the bottom sub-period is supposed to go to the third, uh, month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the bottom sub-period opens up October fifteenth and it was supposed to go to twelve thirty-one at five fish is what Massachusetts is. My suggestion was leaving it at six for that period to make up for their having that one fish in the spawning range. Because we're trying to get to the same place, I guess. So I don't know if that analysis was done enough, but that's what I'm reading.
I don't believe it's completed right now.
I'd like to stick to status quo. Part of the reason we did this was to go along with Massachusetts, as Matt said, they did not do the spawning closure. And they also did not implement the mandatory reporting for the four higher vessels. So, we were doing this to go along with Mass, but Mass did not go along with us. They just gained two fish out of it and a longer season, and we lost them.
Just so it's clear to me, this option does run until the end of December, correct? Yes, it does, that's the type of.
Yes.
So I guess, Rich, Rich Hittinger, recreational fisherman. I would think that the five fish is certainly appropriate correction. Right now, private boats are limited to ten fish per boat. So if you've got four or six anglers, you have effectively a much lower bag limit than five fish per person because you've got a ten bag limit on a private boat. Now, on a charter boat, if you've got, you know, a full complement of six people, you can take either thirty-six or thirty to TATAG currently. Well, currently, I guess it's thirty-six, and if this was corrected, then it would be thirty. I, I, I think the correction to bring five per person on a charter versus five per person on a private certainly is, is an appropriate correction.
Any other comments on TATAG? Next item is bluefish, 2019 recreational management. There have been no amendments proposed for 2019, this is status quo, open year-round, no minimum size, fifteen fish. Any comments on recreational bluefish? Seeing none, moving on. So the next item is bluefish, 2019, commercial bluefish management. We have three options. The third option was put forth as a contingency option, just in case there was not a quota transfer from recreational to commercial that was approved by NOAA. We in fact found out today that the transfer has occurred, so we do not need to have the option three starting at the decreased possession limit. Right now, we have option one, which is status quo, and option two, which would be an increased possession limit for the May, from May to November period, and that would be eight thousand pounds per week, up from six thousand. Any comments on commercial bluefish management? Seeing none, moving on. The next item is a black-nosed shark possession limit. This proposal seeks consistency with the 2019 ASMFC specifications for coastal sharks, which prohibits possession of black-nosed sharks north of the thirty-four degree north latitude in the commercial fisheries. Our proposed language would add black nose to the list of prohibited sharks and take it off the, and take it off the possession limit. Any comment on a blacks, black-nosed shark possession limit? Seeing none, moving on. All right, the next, the next item is for cod, it's about the recreational minimum size. This proposal seeks consistency with the 2018 federal specifications for the George's Bank Recreational Cod Fishery. For our, our proposed language for the minimum size, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Basically, what is saying is that Rhode Island, we will, we will, we will have our minimum size, whichever is, whatever the fed recreational size limit is before in the Federal Register fifty-six, six-hundred forty-eight point eighty-nine point B. We also have a change to the possession limit, which would allow vessels in possession of federal permits to, to have the recreational harvest of cod in, let me start over. The, the other would be for the possession limit for vessels with a federal permit, authorizing the recreational harvest of cod. In federal waters may harvest, possess, or land cod in state waters in the amount equal to the federal regulations. Basically, we're bringing our recreational cod measures to be the same as the federal measures. Any comments on recreational cod? Rick?
Rick Bellevents, from the Rhode Island Party Charter Boat Association. We support these changes to the cod recreational.
Brett?
I support the changes to the, to Brett.
Any other comments on recreational cod? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to Menhaden, 2019 commercial management. We have several proposals here, and I'll be happy to go back between them if needed. So the first one is proposal, is a division proposal. And this proposal would broaden the commercial vessel restrictions to apply to all commercial vessels other than small-scale fisheries and floating fish traps. Currently, the regulations only apply to purse seines. And it would not be, like I said, not applicable to small scale, which is the binding rule, as well as floating fish traps. Please see the annotated language for the proposed changes as they are extensive. Option two is an industry proposal to restrict vessel size. And once again, please review the annotated regulations. Basically, they are looking to change the, the fish storage capacity and the vessel length that can pursue a Menhaden fishery. The next one, proposal three, is a division proposal to replace the instances of landing limit with possession limit. And the rationale here is to still allow for possession once the state quota and episodic has been reached if the management area remained open and prohibited landing. The requirement felt no longer, the requirement was no longer necessary due to amendment, amendment three quota increase. And once again, please see the annotated ranks for the specific language. Proposal four is an industry proposal to add a reduced possession limit trigger under the state quota program. This, this proposed language would set a trigger of fifty percent of the quota being reached in order to trigger a limit down to eighty thousand pounds per vessel per day. Proposal five is a division proposal to clarify the transiting rule as it pertains to commercial Menhaden fishery. This, this proposed language would, I'll just read it. The transiting proposal in one-six C, one-B of this subject would not apply to the commercial Menhaden fishery. Any vessel transiting state waters must abide by the current state possession limit. Basically, if you are a federal permanent vessel and you're coming into Rhode Island state waters, you must abide by our commercial Menhaden limit regardless of whether fishing or transiting. And proposal six is a division proposal to amend the date of the end of the episodic event set-aside program to be consistent with the ASMFC fishery management plan. This would change the ending of the episodic event set-aside program from November first to October thirty-first. Any comments on, on the commercial 2019 Menhaden management? And if you want me to go back to any of the proposals on how to do that?
Yes, Richard Hooz, OAK Bay Company.
Okay.
The boat reinforcement, that was for a documented vessel of eighty-one feet, or eighty feet.
Eighty feet, yep, this is a, uh, vessels shall not exceed eighty feet in length, is the proposal.
Yes, that was a misprint, it's supposed to be documented, eighty feet. And this was only, not that we need any more regulations. Fact that, mask import is because of the general public and the perception that a series of boats moving into the bay, larger boats moving into the bay would create the mindset that all the fish are being caught up in the bay. So if there were to be smaller vessels instead of, you know, hundred footers, that all, it wouldn't be as much panic.
Any other comments on commercial Menhaden management? Yes?
John Donio. On, let's see here. Number two, you've got to see possession or taking of Menhaden by who is purring. Now, you want to put a fishing vessel.
Well, we don't have to put up a line. I don't have the annotation as part of my.
Well, anyway, it says a fishing vessel engaged in a commercial Menhaden fishery. You changed the word from purring to a fishing vessel?
Yep, that's correct.
Well, as of now, you can castanet up there legally, and that would take out castanet. I mean, I don't have a problem with seeing commercial fishing, but I'd like to have an exemption for castanet.
And in fact, castanet is an exempted gear type under the small-scale fishery.
It is, so I would be allowed to go into that area.
That's correct.
Okay.
A question for clarity, what's the vessel length now, restrictions on the vessel length? Don?
Uh, we don't have any vessel restrictions for Menhaden.
In that case, I would support the update proposal for the eighty-fourth length, document, documented length. The reason for doing so is exactly what Rick stated, especially what's taking place with Aaron Fishery. It could be quite an influx of large vessels coming in there, cleaning up the resource, so I support his proposal.
In the back?
Dennis Ingram, commercial fisherman, I'd support proposal number two, the update proposal also. Rick Jovan, commercial fisherman, I support proposal number two.
In the back?
Russell Sellester, commercial fisherman, I support proposal two.
Joe, and we'll go over the game?
Yeah, Joe McCary, I support proposal two.
Ian Egan, I support proposal number two. John McDonald, I support number two.
John Donio, I support number two.
Yes.
Mike Charlie, I support number two.
In the back?
Rick Moynor, support number two.
Kevin Sullivan, support number two.
Any other comments for commercial Menhaden? Moving on. So now we're moving on to the shellfish section. This is for whelp management. The first, the first, first one is to amend the whelp measurement, minimum size measurement. That's in part four, shellfish, section four point nine F. The proposed language would eliminate the shell length as used as a metric to measure whelps. And it puts, puts specific language as to how the whelp will be measured. Any comments on this whelp proposal?
So clarifying question, is the five, negating the five to three, it's length, is that too simplified for law enforcement? Or is there science behind that as well?
That is to simplify for law enforcement.
Ken Mergo, commercial fisherman. I do not support this proposed change because I find the two bullet points to be contradictory. When you define the minimum size as three is width, definition of width is the distance between the widest point of an object. And then the second bullet point, you say you have to lay the whelp flat, but when you lay it flat, the outside of the swirl, about an inch high, is up against the measuring board. And that's not the widest point, the widest point is the very edge, which is when the conch can sit and say on a perpendicular angle or so. So I think if we want to stay at three inch width, there shouldn't be any orientation rules. Let's say you have to put it one way or the other, because you're saying I have to measure it where it's not pointing at its widest point. And that's not the width. I find anything about the orientation of a whelp to be very confusing and making measurement very difficult. I know it's not going to be for this year, but for that reason, I would, I would support some kind of physical gauge. Something where the conch goes through, it's no good. Doesn't go through, it's good. I was, there's different options in different state. Massachusetts has a shoot gauge, Virginia uses a ring. But I would support either with the caveat that DEM and fishermen work together with samples to figure out what gauge size corresponds to this three-inch width. I don't want any change in the gauge. But in the whelp fishery, we handle more organisms than a foghider does. A foghider is a very simple rack system that makes it very easy to size. These things are not easy to size, it's quite time-consuming. So I just, the definition is very complicated, and I just don't find it as any improvement over what we have before. And also with the whelps, I think there should be a breakage allowance. The leading edge of the shell where the widest point is, is very, very fragile. I mean, I think every whelp fish can attest to that. And three other states, three states with the, I think as far as I know, some of the biggest. And three other states, three states with, I think, as far as I know, some of the biggest whelp fisheries, Massachusetts, Virginia, and Delaware, all allow a very small breakage allowance. When every time you handle these things, the edge could chip. Therefore, when enforcement is going through your catching, measuring them, there's going to be a few chips, and you're going to have a few whelps that went from three inches to just under. And I don't think fishermen should be punished for incidentally landing a whelp that's a little shorter because the edge shipped off.
I suppose just the way we have that as well.
What was your name, sir? Could you state your name, sir?
Bob Burko, commercial fisherman. I support just the way it was, the three-inch diameter and a five and three-eighths. It's complicated enough that it is.
So, Ron Canyon, I support keeping a status quo as well for, basically, the speed of handling. It's a lot easier to measure at length than it is at width, to be honest, when you're on a...
Yes.
Alleges, that status quo, please?
Yeah, Alleges. You know, at that meeting, we were discussing how to measure it. There were so many opinions and so many options. And that was a horrific meeting to try and figure out how to measure these things. So, you know, what Ken was saying about measuring those three inches is, you've got to come up with something more defined in how to measure them before you really implement that, I think, you know, I mean. It's really tough. I mean, I use a set of calipers that are designed to measure Jonah crabs. It works pretty well, but it's a digital set of calipers. But you can rotate it, and you get different measurements. You can keep rotating, and you get a wider measurement. So, very controversial here, so... I think some more research had to be done and work with the fishing industry on how to come up with a proper measurement for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, Russell Seleska, I support the status quo.
Dan Egan, I support status quo.
John McDonald, status quo.
Any other comments on whelp management, minimum size?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Sure. Somebody's mentioned circumference earlier. I know, I think it was mistakenly in there before. There's nothing about, is there anything about circumference? Because a three-inch circumference is actually really small.
No, that was a mistake.
I don't know.
All right, moving on, seeing no other comments. Okay, so the next whelp management proposal is proposed adoption of a whelp pot tagging program. I would advise everyone to take with it the annotated regs. I will go through the basics right now. This would establish a commercial whelp pot tagging program. It'd be administered similar to the lobster trap tag program. It would maintain a three-hundred pot limit that is already on the books. It would allow for ten percent extra routine lost tags, just like lobster, so you could order up to three hundred and thirty tags, thirty which would be for routine loss. It would be a fashionable, single-use tags, like the lobster tags. Tags cost approximately fourteen cents per tag. That cost is borne by the license holder. Tags are proposed to be valid between March first through the last day of February annually. This rule would take effect in 2020. And again, for all of the changes, please see the noticed annotated language. Any comments on the whelp tagging, pot tagging program?
A question. If you have a federal permit, lobster trap permit on your vessel, you're fishing in state waters, I think the law requires that you have your lobster trap tag in your conch parts, your whelp parts. How is this going to interact with the federal permit holders? If you have a state license only, you don't have to have that qualification. So how is this going to play out with your federal permit holders?
To clarify, if you are a federal permit holder fishing from the federally permitted vessel, the federal rule would be more restrictive in that case. If you were fishing on your state license on a non-federally permitted vessel, you would abide by state laws. Thank you. Any comments on the whelp tagging program?
Question. Valid from March through February annually? So this is like a whole nother tagging schedule thrown into the mix to keep track of?
This is the proposed whelp tagging year, March first to February twenty-fourth.
Couldn't you write coincidentally with, like, lobster? To me, it's just sort of... Gilnets run a certain schedule, whelps can run a certain schedule, lobster can run a certain schedule. Can't we get something that kind of goes together so it's not, or in tabs once upon a week?
Certainly take comments on the season start date for this.
Yeah, clarifying question. With the ten percent extra routine loss, when most of us would lose gear, it's a lot more than ten percent.
To clarify, this is new territory for us. We modeled this on our lobster tagging program, which that is the allowance for routine loss.
Ken Mergo. I second that gear loss in this fishery can be a lot more than ten percent. If we're only going to be allowed ten percent, we also need a catastrophic loss provision like is in the lobster industry. I would rather see a higher percentage for gear loss. I mean, ten percent is usually a minimum on a season for us, so you can, I'm sure other people will mention. I also don't support it in general because I don't see it as being enforced. From what I see, the booby laws aren't enforced, and those are on top of the water. So until there's effective enforcement, I don't see the time or money of us going through this tagging program as being worth it.
Yeah, I second what Kenny was saying. It seemed like at the last meeting, most of the fishermen weren't really in favor of getting the tags.
Yes. Ron Canyon, I'd go with status quo as well.
Any other comments on commercial whelp pot tag?
You got one comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, with what Ken said, if this tagging program does go through, I think there should be that option for catastrophic tags for the guys who lose a lot of gear during the season. That would give them the option of getting a new set of tags and upping their string. I think it's a good idea.
All right, moving on. This is lobster trap tag management. And this is a division proposal to replace the original lobster trap tags ordered but not initially received with catastrophic tags in the event that tags were not received and presumed lost, and presumed lost. So basically, if you don't get your tags in the mail, we will allow you to use your catastrophic tags instead. Any comments on lobster trap tag management? Seeing none, moving on. Okay, and so this is for the upper Narragansett Bay trawling area. It's a division clarification of open and closed periods of the upper Narragansett Bay trawling area to trawling. This is Part Six, General Equipment Position, six point eight-two CI, one, sorry. So the area is already open for trawling, July first through November first annually, except on weekends and holidays. As written, as it is written in rule, it is not clear that the area is closed to trawling the remainder of the year from November second through the thirtieth. We put forth some language to clarify that, and you can see that below. Additionally, while we were going through the language, we were also looking at the map. And we had some issues with the map. One in that it referred to two different navigational beacons. Sorry, so first off, I would like to take comment on the proposed language to clarify the closed period for the upper Narragansett Bay trawling area. Seeing none, move on to the next one. So like I said, as we were going through the periods, we also felt that some clarification was needed for the area description of the upper Narragansett Bay trawling area. As written, the description was unclear in the area of Hog Island and the Mount Hope Bridge. It referred to a Hog Island shoal light and a Hog Island light. There was some confusion as to what they were referring to as the Hog Island light. It was thought maybe that that could have been the Castle Island light, and the name changed. We went through this, and we have noticed this red-ashed area as part of the upper Narragansett Bay trawling area. I can tell you that we've done some further vetting and looked into our now repealed map section, which is right here. And this is what we had on the books in our map section. The division actually feels that this is sufficient to describe the trawling area. But certainly, we take comments if people think it is a good idea to include this into our upper Narragansett Bay trawling area closure. Yep?
I say the red pot is not a good area to drag.
So, so we... I'm sorry, sorry, your name?
Oh, John McDonald.
Any other comments on the map for the upper Narragansett Bay conch? Great. All right, so moving right along. This is our last slide, and this is an extension of the gill net tag valid dates. It's Part Six, Section six point eight-three I six. Right now, the new tags that we have, the orange cow ear tags, would expire at the end of this year, 2019. The division is proposing that we extend the valid date of those tags to go through the entire year of 2020. These are the orange tags for state water gill nets. Any comments on extending the tag period for gill nets?
James Perkins, I support any proposal that's going to have us not having to spend money on tags as much.
Yes, Joseph?
Josiah, I support this.
Any other comments? All right. Well, great, thank you very much. Since there are no further comments to be presented at this time, on behalf of the Department of Environmental Management, I would like to thank you for attending and for your comments. At this time, I declare this public hearing to be closed. Please be reminded that the public comment period will conclude at four P.M. on May, oh, sorry, March the thirtieth. And the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council meeting will take place on April first at six P.M. and May sixth at six P.M. Thank you for coming today.